Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. It's Thursday, January 19th. It's my pleasure to make a motion to return to public session, seconded by Julia. Thank you so much. And this evening, we are looking forward to an overview presentation of music in Katona, Lewisboro, K-12. But first, we're going to start with a very special presentation of featured musicians out in the gallery. And so if everybody would please kindly join us as soon as we vote. Did we vote to go into session?
No.
If we could please vote to be in public session, all in favor, 7-0. And perhaps we should do the pledge before we walk out? Thank you. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And we're going to walk through the door in the rear.
Welcome to our chorus performance. This is the 4th and 5th grade chorus from Increase Miller. We meet on Tuesday mornings, and we are delighted to be here tonight to sing two of our songs, a little sneak peek at our upcoming concert in February. We will be performing two pieces. The first one is called "Amani Atupe," which is from Kenya, and it translates to "Give Us Peace, Give Us Courage," which we all have for being here tonight. So proud. Let's go. [Singing] As we travel down this weary road, Amani Atupe Natus Awi. We need strength to carry on our load, Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. The road is rocky and the way is sore, Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Every road has a different fork, Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Hallelujah, hallelujah, Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Hallelujah, hallelujah, Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Grant us peace, give us courage. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Amani Atupe Natus Awi. Our second swan chin and our last one for this evening will be "One Candle, One Flame." If you're interested in seeing the rest of our treats, please come to our concert February 14th at 9:45 a.m. at Increase Miller. So again, "One Candle, One Flame." Thank you to all the families who came tonight. And obviously to the board for having us. We're so excited. So here we go. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one flame. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle on a long winter's night. In a world full of darkness, in a world full of pain. All it takes is a sparkle, all it takes is a flame. To make joy out of sadness, to bring hope to the light. Light the promise of the dawn on a long winter's night. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one flame. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle on a long winter's night. If you're blessed among the shadows, then you'll light. Be a friend, don't you lie. Wherever your pain is, you'll get back. What you gain can take down a layer of candles or green lights. Once the plan, light the flag is on the candle on a long winter's night. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one flame. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle. Lights, one candle on a long winter's night. If the sun dies tomorrow, will your day end again? Don't you stop when the shadow will you judge? Light the wind. All it takes, once again, don't turn darkness to light. Light the promise of the dawn on a long winter's night. A long winter's night. A long winter's night. I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us for that beautiful performance of our 4th and 5th grade chorus at Increase Miller. Welcome to April Higgins. Thank you for joining us for the music presentation tonight. We're eagerly looking forward to hearing from you. And if we can just briefly first take a moment for any board announcements. And while my colleagues are collecting their thoughts, I will just start on the theme of music by congratulating so many student musicians throughout the district. And I'm actually going to start with Jake and go all the way back to a couple of Saturday nights ago and encore cabaret. And we want to thank Arts Alive for bringing encore cabaret back to John Jay High School after two years hiatus. It's not easy to do that, and we are so grateful to them and so impressed, Jake, by you and your fellow peers. And we hope that as you graduate and become an alum yourself, that you'll come back and that you'll encourage your classmates to do so. And we congratulate our alumni and thank Andrei Crimini, whom I didn't know when he was a John Jay student. He graduated in 2007, what an impressive musician. And he comes back and has really, you know, become the facilitator of that evening. So congratulations on your performance and to all of the students and alumni who performed. And then in the past two weeks since our last board meeting, the high school has just been alive with in-person performance. And I know so many of us have had the opportunity to enjoy the band concert last week. Thank you to Mr. Henderson and all the student musicians. Congratulations. And then just last night, the orchestra, Mrs. Leventhal, and the chorus, Mrs. Spath. And these were just such impressive, beautiful performances. The students looked so proud and accomplished, as well they should. Many, many families in attendance, and so lovely to hear the members of the faculty express their enthusiasm for what they're doing and the great work. So this couldn't be a better night to hear about music. And I know there's also been a lot happening at the middle school, and maybe we'll hear a little bit about that, too. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to board colleagues and then to Andrew for some other announcements, if there are any. Yes, please, Jake.
Can I add a performance?
Please do.
Tomorrow night at the Habitat for Humanity Silent Auction, we have a few student performers and the a cappella group Trebs, Treble Makers, is performing tomorrow.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Is it Bridges to Community Silent Auction?
Did I say the wrong one? I'm so sorry. Yes, Bridges for Community.
Great. And that's tomorrow night?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you. Anything else before we turn it over to Andrew? All right. Thank you, Andrew. We look forward to hearing from you.
Sure. I'll start with music. Also, you mentioned the two high school concerts, last week's band concert and last night, which was last night, the orchestra and vocal jazz. And then last week also was a middle school. Ms. Leventhal, who we heard conducting the orchestra here at the high school last night, was conducting the middle school orchestras last week. And in addition, a program that she initiated a few years ago called Big Little. I think we're going to hear more about that later tonight. It was really lovely to hear high school and middle school students performing together on the stage. And as you mentioned, huge crowds in attendance at all of these events, which was so nice to see. Some other congratulations announcements tonight. First, to John Jay High School senior Cameron Cami Sandel, who was named a Top 300 Scholar in the Regeneron Science Talent Search. That's the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition for high schools. And Cami's Science Research Project is titled "Can People Intentionally Wake Up From Sleep?" And she's mentored by Dr. Remington Mallett, a postdoctoral researcher at Northwestern University's Cognitive Neuroscience Lab. So huge congratulations to Cami on that accomplishment. More accomplishments out of the high school. Three of John Jay's robotics teams competed last Saturday at the U.S. First Regional Qualifier at Peekskill High School. And one of those teams, their name is the Mechanical Operations Bureau, or the MOB, did so well that they're now heading on to the state championships in Utica on March 5th. And I believe they have hopes, there's actually a world competition based in Houston that follows that one. So we'll keep our fingers crossed for them in that. But that's really wonderful. Congratulations also to our own Barbara Spanos, biology teacher here at John Jay High School. Barbara was recently named a New York State Master Teacher. The New York State Master Teacher Program identifies educators who are dedicated to providing an innovative and engaging learning environment. And she joins three other teachers in our science department who've received the same honor in previous years. They are Anne Marie Lipinski, Jim Panzer, and Frank Nuskezi. So congrats to all of them, particularly to Barbara for this most recent accomplishment. And then in other news, other events recently, also at the middle school last week was the Ancient Egyptian Museum for 6th graders. And again, it was really nice to have an in-person event. There were tons and tons of parents who came to hear their students talk about their ancient Egyptian projects. This year happened to be the 25th anniversary of this event, which was founded by Kathy O'Neil, who to this day continues to lead, and also by Alice Cronin, who was a teacher with Kathy O'Neil 25 years ago when the Egyptian Museum first began. So congrats to all of them. Those are the announcements.
That's wonderful. Terrific. Thank you so much for sharing all of those impressive accomplishments and accolades. We really appreciate that. Congratulations to all of those students and to Mrs. Spanos. That's great. Any further comments or announcements before we move forward? Okay, then we are ready for our featured presentation regarding K-12 music in Katona, Lewisboro. Welcome, Mrs. Higgins, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I feel very honored to be here with you, and I'm very excited to share news about our department. My name is April Higgins. I am the K-5 music teacher at Increase Miller. I feel very fortunate to be here at Katona, Lewisboro. I have some great colleagues, wonderful colleagues, and I just feel really lucky to have one of the best jobs I can imagine. So thank you so much again for having us. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the department. First off, we just want to give a brief overview about music education. So as you all know, music education is so multifaceted. When children engage in music, they are really developing their whole child.
I'm sorry. The clicker does not always cooperate. Rich may have to help us out in the back.
There we go. Benefits of a music program. So we are so blessed here to have a boisterous, blooming music program. As you can see, some of the things that we know music training helps us to develop, we saw these right now. Children singing, singing in different languages, memorizing their music, working together, improving their oral skills, their auditory skills, their pattern. I mean, we literally just saw all these things happen right before our eyes. So every day when kids are engaging in these music classes, so many things are happening in their brain, and that experience is truly invaluable. So we're lucky that we have so many programs here that we can give to our experiences we can give to our students.
It's valuable in other areas, too.
Of course. This is just the New York State standards for the arts. So using our, the four main standards, creating, and they call it PR. Usually, there's like performing, presenting, producing. They're kind of lumped together in one. And then, of course, responding and connecting. So I can't tell you how many times I've been writing a lesson plan, and I'm like, wow, this is connecting. This is responding. This is producing. And it's almost like in our nature to be doing the four of these constantly. But I know that we have a really strong standards-based curriculum here and that we use everything as kind of like our lens to make sure that we're following the curriculum and just making sure that the standards are met. They apply also to dance, visual arts, theater, music, and media arts as well. Next are the strands of music. So these are the different like types of music children can be involved in. General music, which is what I teach, harmonizing instruments, which can be like any type of instrument, guitar, piano, traditional and emerging ensembles. So this could be your, you know, your concert band, your wind ensemble, your jazz band. All those ensembles. Composition in theory, which is mostly touched upon at the middle school and high school, although I do love to teach theory, sneak in a little theory on the elementary level secretly. And of course, technology, which we know our students love. And or the less, I would say, five years, we've really bloomed. I know Amy Geiger's done great things with technology, but the technology in general in Katona, Lewisboro has really taken us to the next level. This is a sequence of creating. So it's kind of small, but you can see how we start with pre-K, and it goes up to 8th grade here. And you can see how we can take something like creating a new musical idea and what it looks like to move through the grades. So one of the joys of my job is I see children from about the age of five to about the age of 10. So over those five years, I get to like see the sequence and see how they're moving through the standards. And it's one of the gifts of my job is that I love to see them grow. I love to see their capabilities grow and just their whole person really flourishes. So when we use these sequence, these beautiful standards that have been given to us, we can really make sure that the curriculum is met and that children are growing musically. So this is the offerings in our district elementary. So the children have general music twice a week, which is amazing. I mean, I just love seeing their faces twice a week, and we get so much accomplished. They have the choice of band or orchestra, where they will be performing two concerts usually. And they also have lessons that they are offered to have small group instruction on their instrument. And then chorus, of course, is a before-school program offered for 4th and 5th grade, and it is offered at all three schools. In the middle school, children are to, they choose band, chorus, or orchestra. This is a hard decision every year, but we are so fortunate that we have all these ensembles. They also can choose Discovering Music, which is more of a classroom setting, but they do have some instrumental. They've had guitar, ukulele. And this is where the technology program really begins to ramp up, and they have this exposure in Discovering Music. And then, of course, in their high school, you'll see the different strands that are offered, like we saw back on that previous strand sheet. Music history and theory, music technology, advanced study in music technology, which is amazing that they have this opportunity. AP Music Theory, which is a tough course, but it's really rewarding. And of course, vocal jazz, concert band, wind ensemble, just filling our halls with music. So we are fortunate to have a boisterous music program with all these great offerings. Some of the ways our music program has been re-energized since COVID. So as you saw, live performances are the lifeblood of music, right? So when we do these performances, the children are filled with so many things, not only in their brain, but their souls, right? They're filled with this music and this joy. So the return to these in-person concerts, not only for us teachers, the students, the parents, it's just good for us all. So we're so happy to be back in person. The musicals, I have the pleasure of doing the musical at Increase Miller. We're doing Shrek Jr. this year, a little plug. It's going to be great. And of course, the musicals up here at the middle school and high school are amazing. We're so fortunate. The Big Little program, which has been, like Andrew said, just a great thing for our district, that mentorship, children. I remember as a child watching a 5th grader, as I was like a 3rd grader, playing trombone, and I was like, I want to play that trombone. So I know what it means to these kids to see an older student and aspire to be like them. So that Big Little program is, it's really big. And of course, the music teachers shared between the middle school and high school. So a lot of the programs, choral and orchestra, they have that continuity of having the same teacher. And that, again, is a joy, I'm sure, for the teachers because they get to see the growth. They get to see the students bloom, and that's just invaluable. So all these things back, we're so pleased, and I think I just can't stress enough how the children are so happy to be back. And I mean, just this performance tonight, you would think it was, you know, Broadway. They're so happy to come here. So we're so pleased to be back after a hiatus. All right. So we, of course, have to show this lovely diagram of trying to bring forward these goals that our district has put forth, DEI, SEL, and sustainability, as you know. So in the beginning of the year, our department was charged with, what are our goals? Like, what can we do to further our DEI? What can we do to further our SEL and sustainability? So we sat down and we came up with some goals that we thought would be great for our district and for our students. And here are our goals. So in terms of DEI, we thought it would be best to start with our repertoire. So we're looking for more inclusive repertoire that represents a variety of composers, styles, and genres. We kind of did this before, but we're really now taking a fine-tooth comb, looking through our choral music, looking for, you know, new music, looking outside of what we usually choose, and just finding new things that can bring joy to our students. This has been, it's actually really fun looking for new music, and everyone is enjoying incorporating these new styles. For SEL, our focus is on student choice, incorporating partner work, surveys, reflections. And of course, at the high school, the focus has been the restorative circles. I know I've heard from my colleagues up here that the circles have been really instrumental in moving forward student growth. And of course, sustainability, make all of our programs available through QR codes. But I know there's those parents who sometimes want a program. So if they want a program, I'm more than happy to print that out for them because it is nice to have a memento. But if we can save on paper, that is our goal. So those are our three goals, and I'm going to speak a little to each of them. First is DEI. This is a statement from the National Association for Music Education, which is kind of our ruling body as musicians. This is a statement for them that all students deserve access to and equity in the delivery of music education, one of the subjects deemed necessary by federal law for a well-rounded education, which is at the heart of the national music education stated mission, to advance music education by promoting the understanding and making of music by all, which is a great statement because it kind of just captures the essence of "for everyone," and that's what we aim for here. So when we sat down to talk about this, our goal, of course, is to seek repertoire that is more inclusive. So we needed to take a hard look and ask ourselves some questions. What are the cultures that are represented and what is underrepresented? What does our examination of the literature show us about DEI? What do we see? Is there something that we can do better? Is there something we can add? And of course, how can we find authentic music that represents our students? So this is done by reaching out to the students and the teachers with surveys to find out, you know, what is being celebrated, what cultures are here, what can we do to make all students felt seen and heard? It has been really fun because kindergartners will tell you everything, right? They will tell you everything. But it gets a little harder as they get older. So I know some of my colleagues at the upper building, this is like where SEL gets drawn in, getting to know our students, talking to them, finding out about them. So once we find out about them, we can better help them see themselves reflected in our musical choices. So how's it going? At the general level, general music, band, chorus, orchestra, at the K-5 level, teachers, we have been adapting our curriculum to foster the study of diverse literature and experiences. Teachers have created units that introduce a variety of authentic cultural experiences. And of course, the literature that represents the diverse populations of our school buildings, where all children see themselves reflected. At the middle school and high school, just one more.
We'll go back.
Yeah, one more back.
We have to go back.
Okay. They have, the teachers and students have been working diligently also to incorporate DEI into the classrooms. Repertoire is reflective of the students' cultural backgrounds. Lessons include a variety of music that showcases student input through planning and implementation of performance programming. Students have commented how valued and appreciated they feel when they can share their culture and traditions with classmates. As a, excuse me, 612 department, we are thrilled to see DEI work impacting classrooms in a meaning, authentic and meaningful ways. So what does this look like? At my level, I know that we had Diwali celebrated earlier this year. We incorporated some Diwali lessons into the K-5 music. I can't tell you how many kids came up to me. I'm so excited, you know, about, you know, the dia and the rangoli. And it was just so beautiful to see how they responded to this. So that was just a small example, but I'm sure that we could cite many examples. Kids love to see themselves reflected in our choices. Okay, so SEL really ties into this DEI piece. SEL in the, in music education isn't everything we do. Over the course of the growth of SEL in our district, we've had a lot of workshops and different things we've learned about through SEL. The construct is being implemented across the globe and intended to provide students with skills to confront their challenges. By being self-aware, socially aware, and to make responsible decisions, broad instruction often takes the form of reflection, discussion, and lecture. For SEL to be most effective, it needs to be embedded in the curriculum. Music teachers can do this in a much more authentic way, through music. So in that paragraph right there, you can hear so much of what we're saying in terms of teaching students how to be able to control their emotions. So music is super emotional. It is something that does cause some students anxiety. It does also create great joy. So teaching students as teachers, how do we teach kids to have the tools to deal with some of these things that may arise?
Wait, and the next one, Rich?
So what can we do? This is a great resource. This book has a ton of tools for teachers to help foster the growth of SEL in our classrooms, encouraging students to set their own musical goals, practicing. We know how hard it is for students to practice, right? How do they set those goals? Devising solutions for group and individual errors. I did that wrong. No, no, no. That was just a step on the path towards perfection. No kidding. It was just a step. We all know that we are inevitably human and we will mess up. So it's okay. We have to teach students that making mistakes is just part of the journey, the anxiety. So I was doing this tonight myself, navigating performance anxiety, that feeling that wells up within you. What do you do with that? If you can harness it and turn it into positive thoughts, positive self-talk, those things, we're telling our students every day, we're trying to get the best from them, but also make them feel at home on the stage. So we know that's a learning curve there. And of course, understanding the power of music for emotional connection. This is huge. I know that when I talk to my students and I ask them, what's the most important thing about music? what's the most important thing about music? Almost every time, they will say, music brings us together. Music brings us together. It brings cultures together. It brings all sorts of people together. And when we're together emotionally and culturally and can share these things together, our community grows and our school district and our students blossom. And this, you cannot recreate this. Music is what brings us together. So when we can harness all these SEL, DEI, the curriculum, the standards, the goals, and we can put them all together and look at them as one through the lens of just our learning standards of being, you know, active and relevant, these things come together to make a strong music program, which we have. We're very fortunate. And lastly, sustainability. This is just a little QR code for the QR, to make a QR code. So over in our buildings, the three elementary schools, we have over 25 performances in the year and of course, over 100 audience members. Same thing at the middle school and high school. If you can think about all those copies and all that paper and what it looks like, and then year after year after year, how much are we saving? It's just, it's just a small step in the right direction. So we're trying our best. We look forward to expanding our sustainability goals. I know it just, it just takes one step to get it going in the right direction. So this is our first step, and we're looking forward to furthering this in the future, looking for ideas of how to, you know, be a more sustainable music department. I think that's it. Any questions or comments?
That was great. Thank you. What a delight. And we really appreciate you encouraging your students to feel comfortable to perform at the outset of the meeting. That was such a treat. And this was great. We really appreciate the update on how you're developing goals within your department that are in dialogue with the district-wide commitment to the learning commitment and the various facets. So we really thank you for that. I think, you know, the reference to the Big Little Program is very exciting to hear about. Are the students who are involved in that selected? Do they go through a process to become big mentors, so to speak, for the littler ones? And is it high school to middle school? Is it within one level?
And I think that it's just like, it's all, all musicians. I think there are some, you know, that are maybe, you know, selected, but I think it's open to any student who wants to do that.
It's really great. That's.
It is great. Ms. Levinthall worked very hard to foster that.
A great, what a great opportunity. That's really terrific. Thank you. I'm happy to turn it over to my board colleagues for any questions or comments, please. Liz, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. One thing that you had said that stood out to me was that you're seeking new things that can bring joy. And I just wanted to say, the performance, you could see the joy on the students' faces. And actually, even in your presentation, I can hear the joy in your voice. And it's just, it's kind of magical when you hear all of these things come together. And I think that, you know, it's been a hard few years where it felt like, you know, we had a little bit of a joy deficit. And you coming in here and talking to us like this is really, you know, very heartening and exciting, and it was wonderful. So please thank the students for us, too.
They are beyond thrilled to come tonight. And thank you so much for all you guys do for our community and for the school district. And we, the joy that we had for performing tonight, you, like I said, you think the kids were on Broadway. And also, it is my joy to be a music teacher. There's nothing I love more than music and secondary to being a teacher. So that, my two joys in life come together. So it is truly a blessing to be here.
Thank you.
I want to add one thing quickly, if I can. April mentioned briefly, I think, the fact that a few years ago, we started to share some of the music teachers between the high school and the middle school, which was an intentional decision because some of the high school performing groups were getting, seemed to be getting a little bit smaller at that time. And we were hoping that by having your chorus teacher get to know the chorus teacher in the middle school and then know that this would be your same teacher up at the high school, it would have the desired effect of growing it. And based on the concerts that we saw this week, it looks very much like the size of those groups is growing pretty significantly, which is great to see. It's great to see a stage full of musicians.
Yeah, great. Yeah. Ms. Faith Walsh has been instrumental, and she's just, she's a joy to watch. And her kids are so full of music and joy. So thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you mentioning that, and that's really terrific to hear. And I think it's also, just, you know, to the comments that have already been shared, it's, it's hard to not be reminded of how creatively our teachers must have worked in isolation to try to deliver music education to students and keep them engaged. And honestly, the quality of these performances, really across the board, because now we're seeing elementary to middle to, you know, all these high school performances that have just unfolded, it's, it's really a testament to your colleagues and their dedication to students that we're at the level of performance that we're at after the pandemic. When I think about what it must have looked like to try to deliver these programs, you know, again, in isolation with masks, et cetera. So we're very grateful and, you know, so proud of our students and our faculty. And I think last night, Ms. Levinthall said something similar to what you articulated about the power of music to unify and, you know, not something to take lightly. So we really thank you. Were there other questions or comments?
Maybe just staying on Andrew's theme a little bit about the size and maybe the progression through the grades. Do we measure, maybe we don't even have any students coming out of high school who seek music degrees, who go on into college to sort of follow a music path? Is that anything we have data on? I'd be, I really like that we are, that we're seeing a progression and that we're seeing larger groups. And I think it's just natural that it's gonna diminish. But then you would think that at the end of 12th grade, that some students are really passionate about music and choose to follow it as a career.
I don't think we track it in that way, but, you know.
Nice to.
It's interesting. I think anecdotally, I'm thinking of the gala the other night, right? A lot of alumni there.
Sure, yeah, it's happening, yeah.
Professional musicians. It's really.
Yeah, true. At the Encore Cabaret, yeah.
But I don't know the numbers, truly.
And then the other subject, subject that's of interest to me is around sustainability. And I love the QR code idea. But I, I welcome the opportunity to maybe share some ideas about how we might expand on sustainability. It's probably already there. When you talked about SEL, you talked about sort of this sense of togetherness and sort of a common mindset when everybody is thinking in this sort of together way, which music just naturally invokes. And I think that there's probably something there that we could insert some sustainability ideals, maybe just to expand the repertoire to include some sustainability ideas. And maybe it's something we could share some ideas. Mary and I and others are talking about sustainability separately, but maybe as it relates to the music program is something we could think. Thank you so much.
I would love that. I would love to, love to hear your ideas. Very welcome. So thank you.
It was wonderful tonight. Thank you.
We would love to hear that, yes. Thank you so much.
So I know that in the elementary school and the middle schools, music is built into the students' day. Do you know by any chance what percentage of high school students take a music, a music class? Do we have that data? Just kind of to build on Rory's, it would be interesting to know what percentage of our students in the high school take.
We can easily get the data. We don't have it for you tonight.
It's interesting tonight. We offer so much, I know that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was wonderful. You can see, feel, and hear the passion coming out of you for this. It's very, very inspiring. I keep hearing words like music technology. I don't really know what that means. Can you give me a 30-second, what is music technology? Is it more than just an electric organ? So.
So music technology is just any way that students can create their own musical pieces or manipulate like sounds to, to experiment. So like, the most primitive or easiest one would be GarageBand, right? So that's like the base, that's what, like, even in elementary school, we start with that. Thanks to our iPads for everyone. During the, during COVID, that was like my, one of my go-to things to do. So my kids were making their own tracks, creating their own music, just feeling, oh, I love the way this sounds and how does this form look? And then in middle school, they, they take that to the next level and they're incorporating different things and different programs. And I know by high school, they're, Amy Geiger, she teaches the main program up there. She, her students, I don't know if you've ever heard some of their pieces, but they are top-notch. I mean, they're really writing music and creating these pieces that are amazing. So it's really just the manipulation of music electronically to create, you know, different pieces, but also just, you know, for students to play around with, with what sounds good together and form and things like that.
I find it very interesting because music has always been one of those things where, you know, in order to write music or play music, you need, you know, you need to develop a lot of skills, right? But it seems like, I know my kids' friends were, they don't play an instrument, but they were creating music. It seems like this technology, you can get to the part of being creative without having to necessarily be good at actually playing an instrument or understanding.
No, that's true. So like in GarageBand, it's, they have a lot of pre-made loops. They're called loops usually. And the way the students can, can change them, alter them, change the sound effects, change. Yes, so you can have the creativity, the idea, but not necessarily be able to, to write physical music. So in that way, it is great because it opens, opens the door for a lot more students in that regard. So you're right. Thank you.
I do think in, as a music tech parent, like in music tech, they do, a lot of kids end up learning keyboard and guitar chords so that they can layer those tracks into music that they're working on. So kids who actually maybe didn't play an instrument throughout elementary and middle get to high school, and then they start playing instruments so that they can layer things into their simple, you know, simple sequences into their tracks. So it's, it's a great way to percussion, things like that.
Please, Jake.
Just want to commend, sorry, the whole department, all the work you guys do. I didn't go to the district, but from seeing some of their faces, and I happened to be some of their counselors over the summer.
Oh, nice.
But to see their faces and from experience, I know how much courage it takes to go up there and sing. It never leaves that, like, the little fear that's inside the nerve, but that's a good thing. Even like when I've performed, I performed all over. I performed in Disney Carnegie Hall. I have the exact same nerves that I feel on that stage. And today was round two of auditions for the musical here, Nine to Five. My feet are killing me, but it was dance auditions today. I just want to commend the work, everyone in the department. It's really magical what you guys create.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No further comments or questions? We thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so very much for joining us for the presentation. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You as well. Thank you very much. Wonderful. This brings us to our opportunity for public comment. Welcome to members of our community. We're happy to invite you to introduce yourselves at the podium, please. And we request that you please try to limit your remarks to approximately three minutes. Please introduce yourselves. And for those of you who haven't participated previously, I'll just clarify that we won't be engaging in any back and forth. It's our opportunity to really listen to the community. And, you know, please trust that we'll be taking your remarks under advisement. And we appreciate you sharing your perspective on agenda items tonight or other matters pertaining to the district. And at the moment, I'm just aware of one person who signed up, Joe Ferrer, please. Welcome.
Yeah.
Good evening.
I'm gonna wing it a little bit, and then I'm gonna read what I wrote down. But first, I want to say it was beautiful what the, what the children did. And I believe in arts and theater and music myself. You know, when I was a kid, I grew up in the Bronx. And like you were saying, there's a lot of electronics now, but I DJed. And I had a reel-to-reel, I had turntables, I had a mixer. And we had to make our own tracks because that was the inner city, that's the way it was. And we had dance crews and so on, so forth. And when I was a kid, you know, science was a big deal for me, right? You know, I thought I was gonna be Captain Kirk. I wanted to go into space and be an astronaut. And all that creativeness as a kid, right, stemmed from my imagination, which I think is getting lost today because a lot of kids are being told, you know, sort of what to imagine, as you would say. And so I'm all for that. And even, to be honest with you, you know, I ended up being a businessman, but I always had a passion, you know, to make a TV show, and I did. I had a TV show, I was producer, I starred in it. And the reason I'm saying this is that I'm, you know, I know you've seen me speak here before, but I am very balanced in a lot of different things, but I'm also passionate about others. With the same breath, while I did make believe I was Captain Kirk or I thought I was this great DJ, I also made believe I was Lou Piniella or I was Mark Bavaro. Because when we grew up, we did not have a TV like today or cable. We played manhunt. We made, you know, swords out of paper and cardboard and shields and King of the Hill and all the rest of the stuff. And we ran, we, you know, we jogged. We, we were continuously in emotion beyond all the other stuff that we had to create on our own. And my son right now, he's doing extras right now because of the acting stuff I did. And I did commercials. I've been on the radio, I've done voiceovers. So I believe in that. I want you to understand that. And then another part which I love is comedy, which is not something I ever, ever did. And I was inspired, I saw Konstantin Kison speak at the Oxford Union Society. Some of you may have saw it. I don't know if you did. And I'm not gonna get into the politics of what he said. But I also was on a debate team when I was, when I was in school. And I believe in debate. I believe in think tanks. I believe in whiteboard. And, you know, I'm gonna make some comments, but I will urge the board here, or urge all of you, we may all have alternative values or ideas or something, and not all of them are right. Even though we may be told it's right, it's not always right, from both sides. But there should be a think tank, there should be parents in a room to have the back and forth that you say you can't have here. So therefore, people don't have their own perception of what reality is. And the same way, you may not have perception of reality. I ran 324 stores. I just left an organization with a very hefty salary, had a five-year contract, and made a decision. I've been in business for 37 years. But I did not believe in the direction they were going as an organization, so I forfeited my salary. And I don't know what's gonna happen, knock on wood. I'll probably be okay. But that's because of what I learned as an athlete, as a kid with an imagination, and everything that went along with that. Just when we, like, we played baseball. We played baseball with three people. We played stickball, we played wiffle ball. So it's very important that we understand the importance of athletics. I am here today to plead with this board to understand how important our athletic programs are to our children. Athletics has been a centerpiece of societies going back thousands of years, such as the Olympics. Always has had its place in every great civilization. I mean, I could talk about the Romans. Unfortunately, that wasn't the greatest thing in the world, but it was still a coliseum, right? There was different sports, different times in every culture that was all-inclusive. As human beings, we need to challenge ourselves physically and mentally because both are equally important. I know many of you have said, one time or another, without your health, you have what? You have nothing, right? Our kids are sitting in front of TVs all day long, looking at their devices and doing things when they should be outside playing and being athletics, which is crucial. There is no better way to promote a healthy way of being, teamwork, pride, passion, diversity, inclusiveness, and equity in student athletics. Why does it seem that athletics is not a priority in John Jay? That is my perspective. Now, maybe I'm wrong. But it's hard to engage in a conversation in a room and have critical debate and understand what's going on. When I used to visit my stores, I wasn't always in the front line. So I had to go talk to the people in the stores who ran the stores to understand what their problems were. They had perceptions of organizations that were not true. But because there was no conversation, they had their perception, and their perception was reality. And there are a lot of parents out there today that have perceptions of what this board is. Maybe it's not reality. And there's perceptions of who the other parents are on the other side, which I guess I'm on the other side, of who I am. And maybe today you learned something about me. We have many parents choosing private schools to find a balance between student athletics and education. I know parents who sent their kids and paid for private school. Now, I would never do that. I would rather move out of the area because I'm not paying the taxes that I pay to send my son to, my sons to a private school. I paid to get an education. That's why I'm here. But not to forfeit athletics for that. Does this concern you? I don't, I don't know. Does it? It seems like there is a populist agendas leading decisions to the contrary of many of the values that parents have and not well-thought-out plans to create an environment to help our children develop into productive citizens with a balanced environment. Once again, this is my perception. Is it true? Maybe it's not. Maybe I am wrong. Maybe you're wrong. I don't know. But that's the perception. That's why we need to be able to sit in a room together with the parents and understand what's going on out there so we can understand what's going on out here, and then come to a compromise where we all feel that'll be a good solution, as you would say.
I want to thank you for introducing yourself and for your remarks so far. We're going on about six minutes.
I'm almost done. I just got five more lines. I'll read through and I'll. I'm almost done. I just got five more lines. I'll read through and I'll finish it. It is our job as leaders to give our children the tools to overcome adversity and to find solutions to problems in a complicated world. Sports and athletics is the one place that people from all walks of life can unite to support their team or their athlete. We need our children to be healthy physically and mentally. I implore everyone on this board to open your minds and hearts to get John Jay back to a more inclusive school by supporting athletic programs as much as the arts, theater events, and music programs. I will continue to fight this. I will continue to fight for this because our children are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Was anybody else waiting to speak who possibly didn't know or didn't take the opportunity to sign up? Okay, if nobody else is waiting, then thank you again for speaking with us. And I'm going to close the public comment period. And this brings us to our consent agenda. This is item 10.01. And I'm aware that we're gonna have some discussion about a couple of agenda items. Did you envision that we'd vote on them separately? Or are you comfortable moving the agenda and discussing and voting?
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote separately.
Terrific. Okay, then would somebody like to move the agenda? Thank you, Julia, and seconded by Rory. And then if we could just pause briefly for at least some commentary on 11.03, which is our opportunity to look at a draft calendar for next year, and then item 12.03 thereafter.
Thanks, Marjorie. So this is that time of year when we bring a draft calendar to the board for the 2324 school year. A copy of that of that draft calendar is on the board agenda tonight. And I try to always give a little bit of background on how we develop the calendar. There's a lot of parameters that surround it. Earlier today, I was with the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES, our component district superintendent, 18 component districts. BOCES develops its own calendar. That's an important factor for us because we have students who attend BOCES programs. So the development of their calendar has some impact on the development of ours. We know that based on our contractual requirements, we need to build in 182 student days, our three superintendent conference days, and our four weather reserve days. We build those in just for in case anyone's not aware because for other contractual reasons, when some districts, when they have an excessive number of snow days, will actually take vacation days away from their spring break or their April break. We don't do that in our district. The nice part of that is families and staff members can plan today, knowing that that spring break will be there no matter what the weather. The challenging part of it is, we have to build a total of 189 days into the school calendar between Labor Day and whatever the state tells us is the last day of school. So that creates some pressure for us as to how to fit those days in. Fortunately, next year, we're able to do it. And you can see how we've done that on the calendar that's attached. We are proposing to start on Tuesday, the 5th, with a staff development day. That's the day after Labor Day. And then the students would come in for their first day on the following day. And then somewhat unusually, the state determined the next school year, the year ends on a Wednesday in June. Typically, it ends on a Friday. We have no say over that. Next year, it ends on a Wednesday. Additionally, something that was new for us, I think, I think this is the first year, the year we're in now, the Juneteenth is a statewide recognized holiday that the state requires us to take. And and next year, that holiday falls exactly a week before that last Wednesday. So a little bit of a different end to the year, and I'll say a little bit more about that in a minute. Other than that, though, we're able to fit the days in. The board can see here that there's usually discussion around February, and then some discussion around the placement of the spring break. So in February next year, pretty comparable to recent years, we're placing, we're proposing to place a staff conference day on the Friday before the President's Day weekend. That's February 16th next in 2024. And then two vacation days on the Monday and Tuesday following. So that creates a five-day weekend for community members, creates a four-day weekend for staff after that staff development day connected to Labor Day. One thing that is a bit different in next year's calendar and unusual is that typically the spring break that we take is placed close to the Good Friday and Easter holidays, which in almost every year also puts it adjacent to the Passover holiday. Next year is one of those rare years when that doesn't happen. So the break that the board again can see here, starting on Good Friday, March 29, and and going into the following week, does cover Good Friday and Easter, but does not touch Passover, which next year doesn't happen until later in April. It starts on the evening of April 22. So that that's actually being handled differently by different districts. In almost every other year, because it's covered by that week that I just mentioned, districts would be off on those first two days of Passover. But next year, because Passover falls later, districts are making different decisions depending on the days they have available to them. So what we've proposed in our calendar here is to put one vacation day on the first day of Passover. It starts actually that evening, but on Monday, the 22nd, and then to place one of our four weather reserve days on the 23rd. So it's possible the two days will be there. That weather reserve day, we've identified as the last weather reserve day we would use. So we would go through the other three first. And if we don't in fact need all four, then the usual two days would still be vacation days. And if we're not able to do that, then we would just have the one day off. And if people are wondering, well, why can't you just make it two vacation days? The day would have to come from the February break. If we were gonna move another vacation there, it would have to get moved. And we've certainly heard feedback over the years in our community that there's appreciation for some break in February. So there's just a little bit of tension there. Do we do we make the February break shorter this year? Make it down to a four-day weekend so that we could put two vacation days at the Passover time there? We know that some districts are actually not putting any vacation days at Passover in next year's calendar because of the way things fall out. So we landed on a compromised position by putting one vacation day there and one weather reserve day. And the only other thing I'll mention is that because of the somewhat unusual end of the year in June next year, and the ending on a Wednesday, we haven't finalized those early dismissal days that occur at the middle school. So we're just putting that a hold down there for now. Those are TBD, and we'll figure out how those fit in. They'll still be the early dismissal days that traditionally happen at the middle school. We're just not sure exactly when they fall, the order of the days, that kind of thing. So that's a TBD for now. But everything else, I think, is fairly straightforward. If there's any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them. If there's anything the board wants to discuss, that's fine, too. Alana?
I was just curious how the the order of taking weather reserve days works, and if it's different at all for this coming year because the calendar's different.
There's not really any magic in it. We generally start with the the earliest one in the year, and then we work our way up, figuring that we want to get as far away from possible snow as we can. So we spread the days out, and then we take the one that's in March first. Then we take the one in April. Then we take the one in May. And the only exception next year is that we decided to flip the April and May ones so that we would leave the Passover day to be the last possible one to get taken. Otherwise, otherwise, the third and fourth days would be flipped.
I think that's helpful. It, I mean, I see, I think the calendar makes a lot of sense where their spring break is, just kind of in the calendar. And it's nice to have a break in February. And I don't know if there's a way to do this. It does feel a little hard to have just one day for Passover when the celebration's actually in the evening. And so kids are potentially up extremely late as part of the holiday. And technically, the second day is actually like a pretty religious holiday. So I don't know what that means, you know, if we have to have it, perhaps there's a way to have sort of a no homework or no missed work policy for kids that are observant during that time because we are not having the days off. But just something because it is one of the major holidays, and it is that 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 Tuesday is actually a very religious holiday.
Yeah. So we were certainly, we generally do encourage our teachers to be mindful of any holidays that students need to observe. So we would give that reminder again.
I think the Passover is an elegant solution. I think that's a good way to handle it, sort of splitting the difference. I'm asking, I know it's not fair to ask you to explain Albany, but is there any rhyme and reason to what is the last, it's like this big reveal of what's the last day of school? Is it something to do with number of days? Like, is there any
Yeah, I'm sure it is. And I wish I could give you, I'm sure there is an answer. I don't know what it is. But I'm sure that it is connected to counting a certain number of days from Labor Day through the rest of the year that gets us to there. You know, the state, the state minimum requirement is 180 days. Most districts in our area go a little beyond that in what they ask their students to do, so.
Any other comments or clarifying questions?
It's artful.
It is.
A good calendar.
Like a puzzle.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then can we ask you to also say a few words about 12.03, please, which is our opportunity to adopt a textbook for world languages?
Absolutely. And I'm gonna ask Mary to do that part for us. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Yes. So our world language department has been working for the last two years. They actually notified that the current publisher of the textbooks that they're using in Spanish and French is disbanding its language branch. So they knew that this was coming and that we would have to prepare for it. So they have been meeting with different publishers, looking at different products, and thinking about what would be the best solution. And they landed on Wayside Publishing. So it's interesting that the gold standard in terms of the organization that they follow is ACTFOL, the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Language. And they have proficiency levels that are really the gold standard in terms of thinking about language acquisition. So the textbooks that they've chosen are based on those levels and take students from what's called novice up through, I think it's intermediate, advanced, intermediate high to advanced low. So there are many different levels. But as you go through, for example, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that is the equivalent of Spanish one. And that would really take you through the novice levels. And then going into Spanish two. So they're very much aligned with standards. So you heard April talk about the standards this evening, the world language standards, the ones that New York State uses are very much aligned to these ACTFOL standards as well. And the textbooks that they're adopting are also aligned. And so it's also interesting, too, the way textbooks are evolving, you know, thinking about online subscriptions as well as physical textbooks. So our classrooms will have a set of 30 physical textbooks in them. And those physical textbooks, when you purchase them, come with an online student subscription. But we're also purchasing enough subscriptions for every student to have a subscription. So more subscriptions than textbooks. But we're only buying the textbooks once, so Danelle doesn't get too nervous there. So that's a one-time purchase. But we would have to subscribe to the online piece each year. So the the idea is that students wouldn't be taking the textbooks home, but they would have access. And they also have access to lots of digital media. There are podcasts, there are videos. They really felt that this publisher in particular was very updated, culturally responsive, there was representation. They really did a very thorough job of of looking through what they would like to see. And the nice thing is, for both the middle school and the high school, it's the same publisher. So there's continuity across the curriculum in both languages.
It's very exciting. The members of the committee that participated in the recommendation seem very enthusiastic about these materials, which is great. Very exciting. Is it envisioned that this would be implemented for this coming fall?
So this fall, partially, so I had to remember to take my notes. So in Spanish, middle school grades and ninth grade next year, so Spanish one and two, and French all grades, and also AP. And then the following year, Spanish for grades 10, 11, and 12. So Spanish three and four. So we're kind of staggering the publisher into the curriculum.
Thank you. Sure. Questions or comments about that? Yeah.
I really appreciate what you said about online versus hard, hard copied textbooks and beyond just language. I mean, are we seeing students using physical textbooks these days? Or is everybody reverting to online? Is it?
I could talk to that. We have like the physical, like from the two textbooks I got this year were for my AP macro class and my AP gov. And I do, like, I've looked up, like, just the PDF versions, because I find that it's much faster. Like, you can like search up terms. Like, if you're like looking to define a vocab term, it's a lot faster than flipping through pages of a book. And it's a lot easier to transport, just carrying around this versus the giant book, which has just been sitting at my house.
I presume we have to subscribe, and we probably, I don't know whether we have to pay for the 30 books naturally or not. What we're really doing is buying online subscriptions. I'd imagine most students go there. But do you have a sense for whether that's the case?
Well, it's interesting, you know, and the world language textbook might be a little different from like a macro textbook, right? Because, you know, you think about the four strands, reading, writing, listening, speaking. And in the world language classrooms, and our teachers have done a really terrific job transitioning over the last few years to speaking almost exclusively in the target language, which is really interesting and really prompts the students to use it and to listen and understand. But in terms of reading, you know, the teachers felt that having that physical textbook was a really nice supplement to having the online piece, but that they wouldn't be carrying them home, right? That those big textbooks would be staying in the classroom so we can have access to them when needed. But we also have access to all of the exercises and the readings online as well. So it's kind of best of both worlds. I think for everyone, it's a bit of a preference at this point. I think, you know, it's interesting. I think adults certainly tend to want the physical books more. But I do, I think it's still critically important to have those physical texts and have access to them. But I think each course is a little different, each teacher, each student's a little bit different. So it's nice to have the best of both worlds in this instance.
Makes sense. And then just one quick question on the selection of the publisher. Do we engage with local districts or peer districts or other districts at all? Or is it, is it just KLSD, and we make the decision ourselves?
We don't make the decision with any other districts, but our teachers and administrators are certainly in touch with other districts. I know some local districts, I may be mistaken in saying this, but I believe it's Ridgefield that used Wayside. So they were definitely in touch with some of their colleagues there.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mary.
I find it interesting. There must be some rule that we have to review textbooks in particular, because we don't, we don't approve anything else. Does that go back to the evolution wars, that the school board has to
Maybe.
approve textbooks because the local community may or may not believe in evolution?
We're ultimately responsible for the curriculum.
Scopes drive.
Yeah.
Wish I knew that.
Yeah. And it actually has become really interesting, right? When you think about our classroom libraries, there are so many books you couldn't possibly adopt every single one.
Yeah.
And are they the textbook? The difference between a whole-class novel and just the many books students would read independently. So as education evolves, I think these conversations have changed. But a textbook adoption process is still in place. But some states actually have a statewide textbook adoption.
Texas, I think, has a statewide.
Texas, California.
It's in the news every so often. Interesting. So it is a state law that the board has to approve textbooks?
Yes. And the definition of textbooks has been expanded to include other media as media replaces textbooks, you know, to, it's the functional equivalent of the textbook, basically. Thank you. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, Alana.
I mean, I was also just sort of in the policy aspect of it. It was very helpful to see the sort of form that was used with answering all those questions that really kind of gave us, I feel like, a lot of insight without actually sitting down with the books, that it kind of meant the things that we are, that are important to the district. And so thanks to the teachers for doing that. And is that a form that the board developed? As sort of like an implementation form?
A policy committee would have developed it, yeah.
I think it's an exhibit to a policy.
Okay. I see the policy, but I didn't catch the exhibit yet.
I don't know what the timeline would be for when it would feel most valuable for us. But, you know, at some point, this would be a great future board presentation to see some of the benefits of the new curriculum as it's being implemented. Or I shouldn't say curriculum, but the the new materials that are being used. They sound great. And it's interesting to know that it's for both French and Spanish, actually.
Our world language teachers are very excited. And I should, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Lauren Mulvahill. She's our curriculum leader at the middle school. And Monica Burmice, the assistant principal at the middle school, and Mallory McDonald, the assistant principal here at the high school. So they all worked together with the department to come to this decision.
Wonderful.
Can I just sort of build on that? It's come up a couple times of like the idea that curriculum is expanding or the textbooks. And I wonder if that also might be something. To me, it would be of interest to hear a little bit more about that. And like, you know, as you think about what what's included in the curriculum, you know, as it's changed from these standard textbooks, I think that would be a useful presentation for me and maybe perhaps for the community, too.
Certainly something we can think about for next year. That sounds great. And possibly during the budget deliberations, we could even think about putting some more color on that concept because we'll be hearing more from the different building leaders and directors about their proposals and vision for any new materials. So we can be listening for ideas. So we can be listening for ideas and how to build on that as a presentation potentially, if the board's interested.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Quick comment, and maybe it's under the board dialogue, I probably should have mentioned it earlier. Madame Kushner is taking a field, the group, to Quebec tomorrow, actually, I think, under the banner of world languages. They're all heading up there, the French class, and I just think it's great that that's back. I think it was on hiatus for a couple of years, and now our kids are heading off up to Quebec tomorrow, so that's wonderful.
Thank you. Really exciting.
Can I just mention one other consent agenda item before the vote? I don't want anyone to be alarmed or think we're ignoring, there's quite a lot of resignations on the personnel agenda tonight, so I just want the board to be reminded, and anyone watching to be reminded, this is the time of year, actually, when we expect that, and we really appreciate those teachers who are letting us know now that they're going to resign for the purpose of retirement at the end of this year. It gives us the opportunity to start our searches in a timely fashion and be ready for the next school year, and have access to the best possible people to bring in. So we don't take time out now to acknowledge and congratulate all these people, but we have a really nice retirement celebration later in the spring, when we will have time. But very quickly, we'll say congratulations to all these people tonight, because it is a big step in their careers, obviously, and we thank them for all of their service.
Thank you so much for clarifying and for explaining the timeline, and yes, please, we extend our congratulations as well. Thank you. Okay, if there are no further comments or questions for the consent agenda, then I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0. And this brings us to 15.01, which is a generous gift. It's my pleasure to move this resolution, if I could please have a second. Thank you, Catherine. This is from Rena Slaven, Slaven, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing. It's a donation of instructional supplies for the Wilson Reading Program. These are the magnetic tiles that we've seen on our building walks through some of the classrooms, and it's valued at the amount of $380, earmarked for our RTI program. So if I could please ask for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0, and thank you so very much for this generous donation. We really appreciate that.
Our interventionists were very excited.
Oh, thank you, Mary.
Really made life much easier, so.
That's so great to hear.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. That's really great. Thank you. And that does bring us to 16.01. If there is any further discussion or new business topics, please, Jake.
I forgot to mention this earlier. For all high school parents and students, tomorrow is the last day we can guarantee that there's a yearbook available to purchase. Tomorrow's the last day that we're able to increase our order size. Right now, I'm looking at it, we have, we've sold 495 of the goal 500 books, which is really incredible. So to get your yearbook, go to www.yourbookordercenter.com, enter code 4507. Make sure you've selected John Jay Senior High School. That's where you can get yours for the end of the year.
Thank you.
If we have any left over, we'll continue to sell them on the site until we run out, and then if any happen to come in, we'll sell them in person.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thanks, Jake. Any other new business items, topics? Okay, if not, then thank you again for that delightful presentation and for our featured